You're all set.
Okay. I'd like to call the April meeting of the Niskiuna zoning board of appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Present.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Present.
Mr. Trymarki?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here. The first order of business tonight would be to approve the minutes from the March 17th meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve him, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second. This is Mr. Frary.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Abstain.
Mr. Trymarki?
Abstain.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Abstain.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Please call the first case.
The appeal of Joseph and Ellen Malinowski for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B in Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 1279 Van Antwerp Road, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a 10-foot by 16-foot pool partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet, the pool at 160 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a side setback minimum of 15 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 10 feet from the side property line. Therefore, a 5-foot side yard setback variance is required. 11 notices were mailed out and one reply. The reply was from William Danko, manager of One Buxton LLC. And he said that, um, "Please know that I have no objection to the variance." Chairman Goodman, you're muted.
Brad, you're muted. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Ask if the applicant could please come forward and set forth your application, the reasons for, what efforts were made to mitigate either the need of a variance or the size of the variance.
Hello, I'm here, Ellen Malinowski. Um, as you know, we live in Old Niskiuna with our property. Even our house doesn't meet the 15-feet setbacks from other houses. So, the pool is centered as best I can in the yard with the garage structure. And I think it's a very small pool, 10 by 16, fits nicely in the backyard without crowding it. Um, it's very tasteful. There's no other place to put it.
Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Uh, Ms. Malinowski, did I say it right?
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, you looked at other pool and this one is the smallest, you said, uh, that you found?
Yes. This is the smallest pool. I looked at concrete designs. Um, this is a fiberglass insert. I looked at many other designs. No one would create a pool. This is the smallest pool I could find.
I have to agree for, because we had other pools and I have to agree, this is the smallest size of pool. This is an in-ground pool, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about your backyard and about, uh, the drainage uh, of the pool and your, uh, pump and so on. Just give us a little bit of your plan in there.
Uh, well, it'll be a pump that the Concord Pools is putting in the pool. So they will be putting in the, uh, pump and everything that's needed, um, to clean the pool and, and maintain the pool and, uh, electrician will be coming in. I, I don't know exactly how to answer drainage question. We have sand in the backyard. I don't, I don't know what you, what you want.
Okay. Uh, just, uh, with pools, in-ground pools, because I have one myself. You have to backwash it and sometime empty it and so on.
Oh, okay.
So that's where I was relating to.
Okay.
What, where's that, uh, what's the plan for the drainage?
Okay, sure. Perfect. We have a, um, lot behind our house that is, uh, forever wild. It belongs to, um, Ellen Cogden, who is our other neighbor, who while didn't write in, does not have any objection to the pool. I've spoken with both of them next door. Um, they own that property right behind us and it's just wooded lot. And it's fine to, um, drain if I needed to into that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm good.
Any other questions from the board?
Ms. Malinowski, this is Keith Frary. Um, quick question. It looks like, or at least from what I could tell, you have existing fencing in the back. Is that right?
Correct. It's currently a four-foot picket. I did just submit a building permit for a six-foot fence that will meet all the pool-related codes.
And it looked like, uh, at least from your plans, you were going to have to gate across, because your garage sits way back in the corner, that you're gonna probably have to put in a gate, uh, at some point along the, the rear where the fence is located. Is that correct?
Yes. There is a, a little gate there now. It'll stay in the same place as they're on the plans, uh, right next to the garage. And then there's a gate across the driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Hearing none, I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion on this to approve this variance. It looked like, uh, the applicant looked at other options, uh, picked the smallest size of pools, uh, and the benefit couldn't be achieved in any other, uh, means. Granting this variance will not produce any undesirable changes in the neighborhood or neighbor, uh, character, the pool size, uh, they closed, uh, they chose the smallest pool. Uh, and, uh, knowing the old Niskiuna, uh, that's limited usually to backyards. We had other applicant in here. So it's an in-ground pool. It's not gonna be, uh, exposed to a neighbor. It's, uh, not determined, uh, to nearby properties. So everybody's, uh, uh, the neighbor that wrote a letter, he, he was okay with it. Uh, the request, uh, is substantial, uh, but any application, you know, comes in front of us. They're all, uh, substantial and we have to decide if this is something, uh, doable for the town of Niskiuna. So, uh, uh, in this case, uh, other option placed in the pool were considered. It looked like this is the best option for the property in, uh, Old Niskiuna. No adverse effects, uh, on the neighbors, uh, neither physical or environment, because they already had a plan where they're gonna, uh, drain the pool and so on. Uh, is this self-created? Yes, it is. You're gonna put a pool back in. Uh, the difficult, uh, in Old Niskiuna, most of the, the houses have a small backyards. So for all these reasons, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this variance.
Motion has been made. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
He's muted.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
The reason stated, yes, I'll note, as was previously noted, that this is a very small pool and there would be no other way to put a pool in without a variance. Your variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
If we could please call the next case.
The appeal of Jeffrey and Janelle Cardone for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of town in Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 203 Campo Court, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a 16-foot by 32-foot in-ground pool partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet, the pool at 512 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 5 feet from the side property line. Therefore, a 15-foot side yard setback variance for the pool is required. 11 notices were mailed, one reply. The reply was from Dennis Kaplan and Laura Hart at 1166 Godfrey Lane. This letter responds to the opportunity provided to us by the zoning board of appeals to express an opinion on the application for a variance by the property owners of, at 203 Campo Court to build an in-ground swimming pool. The application was received by Niskiuna Building Department on March 12th. The hearing scheduled for April 28th. We offer no opinion regarding the applicant's request for the setback variance in relation to the subject property's side property line adjacent to their neighbors at 201 Campo Court. However, we would like to direct the board's attention to the importance of the 30-foot storm drainage easement at the back of the applicant's property, which our property abuts. The diagram for the proposed pool submitted with the application appears to show the northwest corner of the pool abutting the easement. This suggests that any perimeter, concrete, or cement border surrounding the pool would be located partially in the easement. Prior to the development of the property at 203, we observed poor drainage on the property following heavy rains and snowmelt. The easement and related improvements made to the property by the builder and/or owners appear to have, have been effective at providing adequate drainage. We are concerned that any pavement or other development on the storm drainage easement might compromise this improvement. We realize there are no variance being requested with respect to the easement, but we have never seen residential pools within the paved border, respectfully from the 1166 Godfrey Lane.
Thank you. I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name, address, what your application is, the reason for the application, what efforts were made to either minimize the need of a variance or minimize the need, or mitigate the size of the variance.
Yes, hi, members of the board. Again, my name is Jeff Cardone and I'm the proud owner of, uh, 203 Campo Court in Niskiuna. And I think as the one comment letter touched on, I mean, the primary, the, the, well, not the primary, the, the driver to the variance request is this 30-foot drainage easement, uh, from our rear property line. Um, when we bought our home and we built, and, and all the homes on Niskiuna were built, um, you know, a few years ago, um, we, we looked at our survey. The, the survey indicated a proposed easement, uh, for sewer drainage. And so our assumption was that even though, that it was proposed, that it wasn't actually, you know, in place. Uh, when we, you know, started the process of considering putting a pool in our backyard and we, you know, looked into this further, um, that was obviously not the case. So then in light of this 30-foot easement, which obviously we can't have any permanent structures on there, um, we, we looked into various other alternatives in terms of where we could put the pool. And there's really not a spot in our backyard that would work where we're not going to need some sort of variance, whether on the rear, whether on the, our rear property line or the much larger, because of the easement, or our side property line. So that, that's the real driver of this. And, um, you know, we reached out to all of our neighbors. Um, the, the proposed location is, is, is gonna be close to our home. It's really only, it's, it really only impacts to a one Campo Court and they're very much, they have no issue with the proposed variance. But again, that is, that is the big driver of this. And then in terms of drainage and whatnot, we've had some water issues because our neighbor, actually 201, has a pool. We've, we put in place a French drain on our rear property line. We put two side drains, uh, on our property as well to mitigate any water issues. We would, we'd be more than happy to do that if there was any, any further water issues with, with the pool. We're gonna obviously make sure that it's filled and graded correctly and the like. And again, I thank the town for its consideration of the request.
So you would not be building within that drainage easement at all?
Correct. No. We would not.
And what considerations did you make for other places? Was there anywhere else that the pool could go, taking into account this drainage easement and other setbacks?
No, there really would not be. And, and if we, we could, we could have requested on the other side of our, uh, that we adjacent to 205, but that, the pool be very, very close to our neighbors. So the locations, the, the proposed location of this pool, you know, notwithstanding the, uh, the variance request, I mean, it's gonna be at a considerable distance to our neighbors tonight. So from a privacy standpoint and location, um, you know, we think it works best.
Question from, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have something else, sir?
Nope.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I think somebody's on mute.
Yes. Richard Green speaking. Mr. Cardone, did you say that one of your neighbors has a pool?
Yes.
And where is that in relationship to your, um, residence? If you, you're facing in front of the house, right, or to the left or somewhere?
So it's, the pool is at 201, so, but it's on the other side. It's not on our, on our property line. It's on the opposite side, um, so it's not adjacent to our property line, but it's, but it's.
Thanks. You're on a, oh, yeah, but thanks, yeah.
Yes, as you, on that picture, you can see the pool.
Mr. Cardone, you're on, you live on a court, right? Drive in and there's a circle?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So the pool is not next door to you, but there's another pool, one of your neighbors on the same court, correct?
Yes.
And how is the pool, I'm sorry, Mr. Green?
No, it's, thank you, Mr. Cardone.
Oh. And what side is the pool gonna end up on?
It, the, it will be, uh, closest to 201 Campo Court, the, the proposed variance.
Other questions from the board?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the size of the pool, is it 16 by 32?
Yes, sir.
And did you look at, uh, any other sizes? So this way you don't need, uh, 15 foot, uh, setback?
We, we, we explored even smaller, but the challenge we have is with the 30-foot variance and it, there's just not a, a real, even if we went with a smaller pool.
Right.
Yours, because of the layout, we, because, you know, if, if, but for the, um, the 30-foot easement, we would pro, we would be able to fit the pool. We would just turn it the other way. So the, the long area is, the long, the 32-foot pool part is, runs parallel to the house. We would, we would have it run perpendicular and it would fit nicely. But because of that 30-foot easement, there's really not a spot that's gonna work that we're, and that's where we could avoid the variance. And really, and by doing it this way, because the long, the 32-foot portion of the pool is running parallel, that sort of mitigates the amount of square footage we're gonna need with respect to the variance. Because it's not the long part of the pool. And I don't know if I'm saying this, you know, I'm, again, I'm not a expert in this, but it's the, it's the 16-foot part. So we tried to mitigate as much square footage as we could that, approaching the, the, uh, that we wouldn't utilize for the variance.
I see. All right. Well, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the public wish to be heard for or against this application? Hearing none, I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion?
This is John Hope. I'll, I'll move that we, uh, approve the requested variance. Uh, the applicant has demonstrated that he has, uh, explored other alternate, uh, feasible, potentially feasible means in which to construct or place the pool in his backyard. However, um, the unique, uh, uh, layout of his property, along with this, uh, significant easement in the back precludes him from doing so. Um, there are not any, uh, objections from the neighbors. In fact, uh, it seems that there are other properties, um, in the area that have pools. Um, so I don't believe it would create any kind of undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Um, the variance is substantial, but that's not necessarily dispositive in this case. Um, there is, is some concerns with respect to environmental effects that the addition of the pool would have, uh, um, some negative impact on drainage. However, the applicant's demonstrated that he has taken, uh, steps with respect to his property to, uh, mitigate any kind of drainage issues, um, which appears to be common in the neighborhood. Um, the, uh, difficulty was self-created, um, uh, as many of these applications are. But again, that's not dispositive. So balancing these factors, I believe they, uh, weigh in favor of approval of the application.
Motion has been made. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to add, uh, a couple of things. That the applicant did try all the different possible ways to get this done and this is, looks like it's the best way to, to deal with this situation. I also add what, uh, Mr. Hope said, that the drainage is a concern and the applicant seemed to, uh, uh, willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that it's not a problem.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Uh, yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Chairman Goodman?
I, for the reasons stated, I will also vote yes. Sir, the motion is carried. Your variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out to the meeting this evening.
I want to thank the members of the board. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Have a good evening.
You as well. If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal by Mark and Carolyn Thompson for a variance from Section 220-18B 2, Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 26 Alva Road, Niskiuna, New York, located in R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct an in-ground pool, one pavilion, one shed, one hot tub, and a fence which exceeds the number of accessory structures. And the pavilion is partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18B 2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. As proposed, there will be five accessory structures on the property, one pool, one pavilion, one shed, one hot tub, and a fence. Therefore, a variance for two additional accessory structures is required. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined a major accessory structure or detached accessory building with other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pavilion at 476 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet. As proposed, the pavilion will be located 10 feet from the side property line. Therefore, a 10-foot side yard setback variance for the pavilion is required. 11 notices were mailed out, two replies. I have a reply from Anita and Munesh Makad-Matijji. I'm not sure how to say that. Thank you for your quick response, for the information. It was very helpful. We are the next-door neighbors, 30 Alva, just south of the property at 26 Alva Road, that is seeking a variance for the construction of the pool, pavilion, and other structures. As discussed on phone, we would like to offer the following as our opinion on the proposed changes. We have no concern regarding the number of structures proposed and we can see how this is not dissimilar to other homes on the street. We do have a concern on the side yard setback variance that is sought for, for the 476-square-foot pavilion. We would prefer for the pavilion to be set back a minimum of 20 feet from the side yard property line as specified by town code. Our daughter's bedrooms on the second floor and our guest bedroom on the first floor face as part of the neighbor's property and we would like to minimize noise disturbance and maintain privacy while people enjoy the outdoors. We have discussed this with our neighbors and we understand that they have alternate plans that can accommodate the pavilion while maintaining the 20-foot setback on the property. And that she asked for the login information. The second letter is from Ann and Eric Ronowitz, 25 Alva Road. And I am writing in regards to the appeal to the neighbors, Mark and Carolyn Thompson, for a variance of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 26 Alva Road, Niskiuna, New York. Please accept this letter as an approval to the appeal made by the Thompsons. Thank you in advance.
I would ask if the applicants could please come forward, set forth your application, the reasons for, what efforts were made to either minimize the size of the variance or the need of a variance.
Good evening. Thank you for, uh, thank you for hearing our case. Um, before I started, I just wanted to address two quick things to clarify. Um, one about the side yard setback. When we actually mailed in the appeal, um, we stated that we are no longer asking for any setback at all on the property. Um, when we were first doing the application for the permit, we had contacted our adjoining neighbors and after feedback from them, um, we decided not to ask for any variance at all on the setbacks. Um, so, and actually that was my fault. I had changed it on the application documents, but I forgot to change it on the map where I had written 10 feet from property line when I originally filed the permit. Um, secondly, we decided to take, to remove the hot tub from our application. We have not really done any research yet on that in terms of size and style and we didn't want that to delay the project. So we decided that we are gonna hold off on that for now and we'll apply for that when we decide what we want and et cetera. Um, unless it's easier for you to do it all at once tonight, and I'll leave that up to you. Um, so that was, I just wanted to clarify those two things. Um, in terms of, um, appeal requests, we're requesting the four structures. We did consider, um, combining the two structures, the shed and the pavilion into one structure. But the main thing of the shed is to store the pool equipment, like the pump and the electrical stuff from the pump for the pool. And that would be near the, um, deeper end, which is located on the northern side of the property. And then, but the main living area is on the southern side of the property, like the flow from our existing sliding glass door. Um, and the living area would be more on the southern side of the property. Plus, it probably would have made the structure extremely large to include the shed part with the pavilion. So we did consider making that one, but we decided, um, aesthetics and functionality would be better to have a smaller shed off to the side in the back and have the pavilion, um, in the, on the side. and have the pavilion, um, in the, on the side.
Okay. Thank you. Um, what would you be thinking about putting a hot tub in? Just from an operational standpoint, if it's easier for us to handle all of your...
If it's easier, it was actually on the original map when I sent in the permit. It would be located li- um, right behind, um, on the map. If you can see, there's kind of a jut out in the back of our house that has our kitchen, kind of juts out the back of the house. It would be pretty much right behind that window. So also well within any setback. That's right, really in the middle of the property. If you can see that little square right in the back of the house where I wrote "hot tub", it's gonna be right there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And questions from the board?
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, this is Keith Frary. A, a couple of questions for you. The, the, um, I was looking at the map. Ju- just so you're aware, even if you didn't deal with the hot tub today, you would have to come back and deal with it later. It's, it's not gonna change in terms of the accessory structures.
Right, right. So we just didn't know if you wanted exact specifications. But if it's easier to do it all tonight, that would be great.
Well, the question is, is you, you're putting the hot tub. Is there a porch or a patio back there?
There's no porch. It will be, um, paver patio.
Oh, is the patio in, or you're putting in a patio?
We're putting it in.
Okay, cuz it just seemed a little strange to have the hot tub just sitting out there in the middle of the grass. Usually, there's a, a patio.
There will be a patio.
The, the pavilion, and I know you provided us a photo, I believe, of, of, uh, the proposed pavilion.
Yeah.
Is that, for instance, is that, the purpose of that is, is eating? Are you gonna have table space there? Is that the idea?
Yes. The point of that is, we really don't have any area of shade in our backyard at all. So that would be kind of a gathering spot. It would be a table with chairs. It would probably be, it's gonna have like a built-in grilling section, uh, with some tables and chairs, like at a bar kind of area.
The, uh, and, and I understand you don't need the side yard setback anymore. Uh, whi- which direction are you moving the pavilion? Are you moving it just further into the yard?
Yes. We're moving it further towards the pool and a little, probably a little up and in, yes.
Now, I'm curious, and again, I don't own a, I don't own a, a pool, so I usually rely on my friends that do own pools to give me that information. Have you investigated if just the equipment for the pool is going in the shed? I know we have been inundated with a lot of, uh, a lot of pool applications, none of which included a shed for, uh, the mechanicals, so to speak, for the pool. So have you investigated whether, in fact, if you had some type of, I don't know, some small tou- smaller type of structure that you wouldn't even need the shed? Have you investigated that with the pool company?
From what the, from what the pool company said, that there were some pieces of the equipment that would be better off enclosed and not out in the weather. And then we also thought that that would be kind of a storage for the outdoor pool things in the winter. So we thought we'd, you know, incorporate that, so we would have a nice area to store, you know, the cushions and whatnot in the winter months.
The electrical box would be located inside that shed, for example.
Okay. Um, the only reason I ask is because when we get a lot of these requests, they don't include that type of request for a shed. And I'm sure that all these in-ground pools essentially run off the same type of mechanicals. So, um, just, just, that's why I asked the question. So, uh, I am back to your diagram, which I'm, I'm trying to pop up here. Okay. Um, so you're looking for, depending on whether or not we, we go with the, the hot tub, you're looking still for the, the five accessory structures?
Well, the hot tub would be the fifth.
The hot tub would be the fifth.
Decide to do that, right. The hot tub would be the fifth.
Okay. And you have no other place in terms of, of storage-wise? That, uh, I'm just looking to see if we can pare this down as much as possible. Um, Laura, if the, if the hot tub is incorporated with the, or, 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 uh, anyone, if the hot tub is incorporated with the pool, is it still separate accessory structures?
Isn't, are you suggesting a built-in hot tub as part of the whole pool deck?
Right, that, that you have a pool deck with a hot tub, you know, um, whether that is part of, still counts as two accessory structures? I don't know, Paul, if you know, or if Laura, if you know, um, what, what designates it as a separate accessory structure? The fact that it's away from the pool, or is it just considered two?
Um, so I think we can double-check, because we actually had an application on Flower Hill last time that was a, a pool and a hot tub put together. But I think that, like, if the water was shared, sort of shared between each other, like, you know how some of them, they sort of can have a waterfall or could be shared? Um, then it would definitely be considered one structure. If it was like, you know, like, just stuck to it, I think it could be considered one structure. Um, but I'll double-check on that for you while you guys keep talking. But if it's in any way separated, then we would distinguish it.
Have, have you given any consider, consideration, Ms. Thompson or Mr. Thompson, about the, uh, trying to sort of make that all into one area?
And, and the, the feedback we got, particularly from the pool folks, that, you know, we're going to use the pool in the summer months when it's warmer, and in the cooler months, uh, the hot tub becomes more of an attraction. Um, and when you connect up and down at the same time. So especially when you have water flowing from one to the other, which would make it a single structure, you kind of have to turn it all off, you know, after Labor Day or whatever. So I, 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 from a functionality point of view, I don't think it would meet on needs to have them connected.
So the intent is, is to have at least the hot tub open, uh, and used in, in months that the pool would not be?
Exactly.
Okay.
And Keith, it, it's a separate structure. It would be considered a separate structure.
Gotcha. Okay.
Practical point, you, you might have a jacuzzi in a pool, but never a hot tub.
Gotcha. All right, thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mr. and Ms. Thompson. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, this is Peter Trimarki. I don't see the fence depicted on the diagram. Can you give us a sense of where that will go around the property and what the nature of the fence is, height, and what the materials are?
Yep. Um, the fence is going to go right along the property line. Um, and then there'll be a gate at the driveway side and a gate on the northern side. Um, it's 54-inch black aluminum fencing. Um, and it, it will go right along the property line, uh, through the back, and then, you know, right by the back of the house, come in.
But outside of the easement, but it's on the right-hand side of the house.
Yeah.
So, okay. Cuz that was one of our concerns was the state of the easement.
Okay, and so it's black with space between, uh, each of the posts intended to be like a wrought iron line?
Yes.
Okay. And do we know that the height of the fence along the sides?
It's a 54-inch fence, and then there'll be, um, a, it says there'll be a four-foot arch gate on the driveway side and a five-foot flat gate on the, um, northern side. Um,
You're cutting out, Mr. Thompson. We're not...
Close and lock.
And you are, you are aware that the, the fence can't go forward any more than the rear corners of your house, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Just so we don't see you back here at some future time. And does it go all the way, the fence go all the way to the back? Completely to the back of your property?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Uh, Mr. Thompson or Ms. Thompson, uh, going back to the hot tub, it sounds like to me you're not ready to put the hot tub in. Uh, just, uh, because usually, I think Laura can correct me on this, you have one year to put the tub in. Um, and if you don't put it in in one year, then you have to apply for the permit. So if you don't think you're gonna be, uh, putting the tub in this year, uh, it, it, you're better off not having this on, uh, as the fifth, uh, structure, and then, uh, have only four in front of us. But that's up to you guys. But I just want to let you know about the one-year putting the hot tub in.
I would in, I would anticipate us putting it in, or trying to put it in, in the fall, like, before it got cool at least. So I think we would use it within the year if you suggest for that.
Okay, just so you know, if, if you don't...
Thank you.
Usually, that's correct, right, Laura?
Wait, if the building permit was included, everything, they would have a year.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Laura.
Other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public, either for or against the application?
Good evening. This is Manish Makijja, neighbor to the south. Uh, and I just wanted to reiterate, uh, my support for the extra structures. It's very much in line with what the neighborhood has in different houses. Uh, and, and I think the, uh, I think, uh, Mark and Carolyn have been very forthcoming about their plans with us, and I appreciate that. Uh, and also the accommodation of the 20-foot setback, which they've withdrawn their, um, their request for that. I really appreciate that, too. Uh, and also, thank you for the board, thank you to the board for the diligence. My first time really in this process, and, uh, we're lucky to have a board like this. Thank you.
Maurice, just, Maurice, if I could just ask you a quick question. Wh- where specifically, and only because the map that I have doesn't have the, the directional arrows on it. If I'm facing the front of the Thompsons' house, where is your house?
Uh, I'm just south, so if you're facing their house, we're to the left, which would be, if you looked at our, uh, if you looked at our yard, um, it would be, uh, adjacent. The closest structure requested, other than the fence, obviously, would be the pavilion.
Okay. And, but you're the next property to the left.
We are literally the next property to the left, yes. And we do have a pool in our property, and kind of understand everything that's being talked about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manish, one, one more question for you, because I, I know you had a concern, and, uh, they, they took care of the pavilion and moved it back 20 feet. Uh, uh, any concern about the hot tub and the view from your property?
No. No concern on the hot tub or any of the other structures.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that, uh, that we, uh, approve the, uh, request for the variances for five accessory structures. Um, it's a little odd that we, uh, that we do this, but then, uh, we frequently have people who piecemeal this and do a few at a time, and they end up in the same position. Uh, clearly, based on the neighbor's representation, um, i- i- it will not change the character of the neighborhood. In fact, his representant, representation was, it's fairly consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Certainly, the applicants are to be credited for addressing the concern about the location of the pavilion and their willingness to move it. Uh, based on the appearance of the pavilion, the fact we've got an in-ground pool, um, I, I, I think that, a- and obviously, the required fence, uh, I, I think it's, uh, it's not gonna change the characteristic of the neighborhood or be an environmental issue. Um, in fact, I think that, uh, that it's probably going to benefit, uh, the applicants. Uh, it is self-created, obviously, but again, it's not determinative of, of our, um, decision here tonight when we weigh all the other factors. So for those reasons, I would, uh, move that we approve the variance.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second for the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna second the motion for everything stated by Mr. Frary.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for a reason stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Trimarki?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
I want to note that it sounds to me like you're a good neighbor. In other words, working out one of the primary issues. And, uh, I think that's great, and I applaud you for that. For all the reasons stated, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoag?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reason stated. I'll also, well, add in that I do appreciate your efforts when you had a concern from a neighbor to work with the neighbor. And I'd also point out that we do have a duty to try to mitigate the number and size of easements, but some ti- or variances, but sometimes, and this is one of those occasions where granting an extra variance for an extra structure actually has a lesser impact on the property than not granting the variance and having the shed and the pavilion put together in a larger structure. So although we did grant an extra variance, it is, it does so to benefit the project rather than a strict interpretation of the law, which would have a greater and more negative impact. So thank you for your time this evening. Your variances are granted.
Thank you very much for your consideration. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of James Kokonak for a variance in Section 220-18A3 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1263 Lock 7 Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District to construct a 12-foot by 24-foot shaker barn, which exceeds the height limit of the accessory structures. Section 220-18A3 states, unless otherwise specified, accessory structures shall not exceed 15 feet in height. As proposed, the barn would be, have a height of 17 feet. Therefore, a two-foot building height variance is required. Eight notices were mailed out. I received five responses. This is from Ann Panenburg-Bury. I live next door to Sue and Jim Kokonak. They have shared their plans for the rebuild of the barn on their property, and we support their plans. Their designs have, look simple and in keeping with the look of the neighborhood. Thank you. This is from Suzanne Murphy and Steve Seminer, 1268 Lock 7 Road. We are writing to support Sue and Jim Kokonak's proposed timber-framed barn. We live across the road from their property, and the barn they have, like, would like to build, will be replacing a derelict barn currently on the intended building site. They have shared the design and dimensions of the new barn with us. It is beautiful fitting with their ne- home, and it will be an asset to the neighborhood. We are all for it. Matthew and Cali Gaspary from 1267 Lock 7 Road. We are writing to support our neighbors Jim and Sue, who have been denied approval of their plans to build a barn on their property. We have reviewed the drawings for the barn and believe that it is fit in nicely on the property and is in line with the character of their home. We live next door to Sue and Jim, and do not feel that the new structure will negatively impact the property in any way. In fact, we feel that the new barn will be a nice feature. This is from Ben Morton-Harmer at 1256 Lock 7 Road. I am writing to support the replacement of the horse barn at 1263 Lock 7 Road with a barn based on the design from Hancock Shaker Museum. We are supporting this because, A, the design is in keeping with the existing architecture of the area, so we, it would enhance the aesthetics, and B, the existing building has deteriorated, so a replacement is necessary and would be welcome. We are Jim and Sue's neighbors from across the road and would be able to see the new construction. We have seen the plans they have provided, which look pleasing. If you have any questions, feel free to call us. And this is from Joy Zimmerlin, 109 Partridge Run. Our property adjoins the property of Sue and Jim at 126... Our property adjoins the property of Sue and Jim at 1263 Lock 7 Road. Sue and Jim wish to build a small barn on their property, the plan for which we have reviewed and are in full support. The plans were rejected by the Niskuna Building Department because the structure exceeds the accessory structure limit of 15 feet, the 2 feet. The Kokonaks have submitted a request for a variance to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please accept this letter of support of granting such a variance.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, send forth your application, the reasons for it and whatever were made to minimize either the need of a variance or the size of a variance, which would be specifically why you can't fit in a roof within the 15.
Okay, good evening, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so my name's Jim Kokonak, my wife Sue is is here as well.
Good evening, everybody.
So the project, as you heard from the letters, is to replace an existing structure that's larger. It's about a 500-square-foot structure with a small timber frame. So this would be a traditional timber frame design using locally cut timbers with hand-cut joints and it's all put together with pegs and everything like that. It's based on a design for the from the Hancock Shaker Village. I've made it, I think, as small as I can and still reasonably consider it to be a barn. It's 12-foot by 24-foot footprint. The neighborhood at Lock 7 Road, we have eight houses on the on the road. Some of them date back as far as the 1700s, our house is from 1802 and it's a shaker-built home. We have approximately two acres, so it's a zoned rural residential. We think the structure will enhance the property and complement the neighborhood. The older barns across the street are much larger, they're much older and grandfathered in, but I think this will be consistent with that type of design. This, as I said, replaces an existing larger footprint structure, but this is taller. I've requested a variance of 17 feet, but as you can see from the plans that have provided, the the frame design is actually 16 feet tall, so that's 16 feet above the slab. The intent is to make this slab on grade. So estimating about 2 inches above that for the roofing materials and, you know, 2 to 3-inch of the slab proud above the grade. I think the actual finished height would be closer to 16 and 1/2 feet, but I asked for a 17-foot variance to accommodate the the final grading, which I'm not sure, you know, there'll be some slope to that. So depending on where the measurement is made, I was concerned about 7, 16 and 1/2 feet not being quite enough. I think the barn is appropriate for a property like this and given the zoning, it's certainly allowable since horses are allowed and there were horses on the property at one time. While that's not my intent, someone might want to have horses and the current zoning won't permit a traditional barn due to the height restriction. And by traditional barn, I mean one that you can reasonably use a loft space for dry storage and still have enough headroom in the in the barn itself on the first level for a, you know, for an animal or horse or something like that. Attempts to mitigate the need, I couldn't find any way to accommodate a loft that you can get into reasonably move around in and have sufficient headroom and stay under the 15-foot height. And in fact, I went with a slab on grade as opposed to an elevated, you know, up on pilings just for that reason, to try to get it as low as possible. I did look into a 15-foot height or reducing the current plans by 2 feet. And the way that we could do that is by changing the pitch of the roof from 1212 to 1012, which would reduce the height by 1 foot. And then further reduction would come from lowering the size of the the corner posts by a foot. So that would give me a 2-foot reduction, but that would lower headroom as by as much as 2 feet up in the loft area if I wanted to maintain the same clearance in the lower level. So I I think for the purposes of a barn, this is about as small as I could possibly go and still call it a barn, and so that's that's why I'm asking for the variance.
And it's fair to say that you're trying to maintain a historic view, a historic structure building type in an area that has similar buildings?
Yeah, yeah, there there's a definitely a price premium to doing this type of construction. It's been kind of a lifelong goal to do one of these projects at some point. I think this is small enough that it's that it's manageable. The work is being, the frame is being cut by a local timber framer in Altamont and I think it will really complement our property and add to the or complement the character of the neighborhood. It will definitely add to our property because the 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 structure that it replaces right now is an eyesore for everyone.
And how tall is the structure that is already there?
It has a shed roof, so I have not measured it and the ground level inside it is not level. It has a slope to it, so at one corner, I would say it's maybe 5 feet and at another corner, I would say it's about 10 feet.
If you were to do a more modern building that would maybe be able to have the height restriction, it would not be in character with the rest of the neighborhood because of the shaker design of the neighborhood?
That's my opinion. You know, the all of the, I believe the house across the street from 1700s, that's Ben's house, he wrote a letter, is is from the 1700s, has some very large shaker constructed barns and the history on this house here indicates that it was built by shakers and we have lots of large hand-cut timbers down in the basement.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
How close would you say the closest neighbor is to your house?
Okay, so I did provide a drawing, to the house itself or to the neighbor's property?
Well, yeah, to the to the to the to the shatter, the proposed, the proposed.
Understand, but to their to their house or to their property?
No, no, to the houses. Well, in other words, one of the issues with with the height restriction is to to eliminate, you know, so you're not intruding on someone's view or you don't have something that's way out of proportion to the to the other properties in the area. So, you know, that based on that consideration, it would be to their house.
Right, so the closest house to this structure is it's Ariel Panenburg's Panenburg's and Matt Hamilton's house, I think they wrote a letter. They're really the only ones that could potentially have a year-round view. I'm estimating it's it's 45 feet to the property line with them and it's easily three times that to or four times that to their house. So I'm going to estimate 200 feet.
And I had a similar picture up that that was put up. It appears that it's a fairly heavily wooded area in and around your, at least to some extent, in and around your house?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you.
Some of those trees from that photo have been removed. There was a very large poplar tree right near the the shed or barn that needs to come down. And I think that basically covers up where it where it is right now. You can't even see it on this photo. So that house in the lower-left corner is the closest one you can see down there and I've indicated distances to property lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Just wondering, is that barn, I I drove by your property, I gotta tell you, I've been to Lock 7 100 times, I just never saw your house. Today, I was able to stop on the road on Lock 7 Road and I looked to the left and I see this beautiful huge house. It looks like 10 apartments or it's huge. So and thank you for, I just wanted to thank you for the history because I said maybe it's a typo, shaker, not shaker. But then I, the more digging I did, then thank you for the history and a little bit of the writing that you did on this application. So the question I have for you, the barn you build in, if you go up, you basically going up the driveway and it's on the left side, correct?
Sorry, guys, I muted you. Yeah, I muted you for feedback.
Okay, sorry. No, it's not to the left. As you're going up the driveway, the driveway splits, goes to the to the right and goes behind the house. And then there's a little pull-off, so it's it's sort of in the in the Y shape of that pull-off. So it's to the right of the driveway.
To the right of the driveway, because I was able to see a a small building. I did not drive up your driveway and I I couldn't tell if that's the building you're replacing.
That that's it, it's a white.
Yes.
White, single-story with a shed roof. Maybe maybe what you couldn't, maybe what you couldn't see is that the driveway also pulls in front of that. So that's why I was saying it's to the right of the driveway.
Okay, well, it's good to know that that's the one you're replacing because it looks like it does need replacement from what I can see. So just tell me about the size. I know you talked about the heights of the older building. What is the dimensional of the building you're taking down? You would need to put more foundation, what's what's going on there?
The the one that's coming down is it's not a perfect rectangle, but it's about 500 square feet is what I what I've estimated. The floor is kind of a continuation of the driveway. So when they apparently when they put it up, they built it over whatever the asphalt pavement was. So it's a mixture of pavement, there are some old footings and all of that would be taken down. And then I, you know, would plan to talk with the the slab contractor to have him them do whatever drainage would be necessary to and to level that out so that it would be as as level as possible where the structure was.
Okay, and we talked about drainage a little bit. So where is that drainage from the barn? Would go, would it go down in the driveway or do you have something in the back? How does that?
There are there are drainage ditches on either side of the property. Most of the drainage from that side of the yard goes into a drainage ditch that's between our property and Matt and Ariel's property. And it's it's sizable and it flows down towards the end of the driveway and then there is a underground small culvert, I guess, that I would say that brings it into the storm drain.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And thank you for the all the history about that house.
Very passionate about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Richard Green, just if you would comment upon sense of proportion. You're driving down Rosendale Road at the intersection of Rosendale Road and Route 7 and there's a big red barn, right?
Correct.
Right, and the barn that you're asking to have is bigger in size or small?
If the barn that I'm thinking of is if you're talking about.
Can't miss it, right at the corner, don't mean to over, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, ready? There's no doubt what barn it is, it's at the intersection of Rosendale and the Lock 7 Road. Big structure right at the intersection.
Okay, it's 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 the one that's right out at the edge of the road?
Exactly.
Yeah, so that is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is your proposed shaker barn going to be bigger? Same size or smaller?
It's significantly smaller. I'd love to have a barn that big, but this is this is 12 by 24, so the footprint is about the size of a one-car garage.
So you're you're asking for something that's not going to be the biggest barn structure in the neighborhood, right?
Correct, far from it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I would ask if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against the application? I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the variance. I don't feel the new addition or replacing an old addition will have any adverse effect on environment or have any impact on the surrounding neighbors. Actually, the neighbor, they all wrote nice letters supportive of the replacing the building to the new barn. I believe the new addition will improve the character of the neighborhood, especially with the historic barn that he's putting in and thinking about future planning if somebody has horses. The request is not substantial. The applicant tried alternative ways, but this is looks like to keep it historic the only way and he's only asking for approximately 2 feet. And and I agree about the pitch, it's 12 by 12 instead of 10 by 12. And for all these reasons, I make a motion to approve it.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded? Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary? Mr. Frary? Nope.
You're accused.
Sorry, yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Trimarki?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
This is gonna be an improvement, yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reason stated, I will vote yes. I'll also note that I'm always cognizant when people are trying to do something within a historical area to keep the historical nature of the property. Sometimes makes strict compliance with the law an impossibility. And in order to achieve those needs, we do have to look beyond the strict structures and find that a variance is appropriate. So for those reasons, I will vote yes and the variance is granted. I want to take you for, thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you all for your consideration and time tonight.
I look forward to look at that new barn.
You can help with the frame raising if you want.
Thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Beatrice Mariner for a variance from section 220-15D, section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2101 Alexis Ave, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District to construct an 18-foot by 30-foot, 3-foot in-ground pool partially within a side yard setback. Section 220-15D states corner locks, front yard minimums shall be required required of both yards facing a street on a corner lock. Side yard minimums shall be required for these located in the R1 and R2 zoning districts. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applied to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet, the pool at the pool at 594 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220 dash 13 schedule IB establishes a side yard minimum setback of 20 feet. As proposed, the pool would be located 15 feet from the side rear property line. Therefore, a five-foot side rear yard setback variance for the pool is required. Nine notices were mailed out, one reply. We received the reply from, uh, he sent two letters. The second letter is from Robert Panico at 2105 Alexis Ave. This letter is in response to the attached variance requested by Beatrice Mariner to construct a swimming pool. I reside at 25, 2105 Alexis Ave, which is the property next to 2101 Alexis Avenue. I came into town hall last week to view the building and plot plan and survey map for 2101 Alexis. As long as the pool will be constructed 20 feet from my property line as indicated and causes no drainage issues to my property, which appear to be unlikely, I have no objection to the pool construction.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address, what your application is, the reasons for it, and what efforts were made to mitigate the need of a variance or the size of the variance.
So Beatrice is joining us by the phone. And Beatrice, if you can hear me, yeah, you gotta press star six on your phone and you'll get unmuted and then you can, there you go. You got it.
I'm, I'm all set. Everyone can hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay. My name is Beatrice Mariner. I reside and own, um, the property at 21, uh, one Alexis Avenue. Um, we, I do want to clarify, um, during the reading, it was said that it was gonna be an in-ground pool. This is actually an above-ground pool. Um, and we did consider many different variations of size. We had to go, we had, you know, looked at, um, both oval and round pools and ended up with an oval pool because to get any pool big enough for our family, we're a family of six, we just, we would, we would never be able to get within the variance requirement. So we did, we changed our minds to the oval, taking that into consideration. Um, as for our neighbors', um, concern, we are going to be, um, off the, um, side property by 20 feet. We will meet that, um, with no problem.
Questions from the board?
If you don't mind, uh, could you talk to us a little bit about the types of fencing that you're going to have under property? Should this application be granted?
So we do not have any fencing. Um, and I, it's, it's my understanding that we won't need any fencing because it is an above-ground pool. It meets the height restrictions and we will have the appropriate, um, locking ladder, but also removable ladders so you can get in the pool without it. And, and then obviously the alarms that are required to be put on the pool will be installed as well. But no, we are, we are not considering fencing, um, at this time.
So no fencing, but locking ladder and other safety features?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Is it possible to have it closer to the house and further from the rear's property line or not?
So we, we, we did all the measurements to see if we could. So, um, the owners tried to build our sunroom and we were afraid to get too close to that. So if it was just the deck on the back, we would have brought it much closer, but we wanted to, after talking to, um, various contractors and the pool company, the recommendation is to stay a cer- certain number of feet away from the house structure itself. You just don't wanna, um, mess with that. And so we really can't go any closer because of the sunroom and where it, um, where the footprint of that is.
Okay. Questions from the board?
This is Keith Frary.
Quick question. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. This is Keith Frary. The, the, you're on the corner house close to Balltown Road, correct?
Yes, we are.
Um, and I used to live right around the corner. The, what is the, the type of buffering between your house and Balltown? I know you're doing an above-ground pool, but, uh, with no fencing, what type of buffering is there between your property and Balltown Road?
So we have a, um, there are gaps in it, but there's a pretty significant like foliage coverage. So there's various trees and bushes creating like a, um, like a green fence almost. We did just also install, although this isn't very close to the pool, we did just, um, not install, we just planted arborvitae because we had to take down some, um, poplar trees that had died, um, to create and, and continue that like, um, green fence around. So there, there is a separation from our property, um, and, uh, Balltown. And in, on top of that, there's a significant ditch between, uh, on the edge of our property right before Balltown as well.
And there is no, the, the, there's a small piece of town property in the back. Is that correct?
There is, yes.
Okay. So you have no, you don't really have any neighbors to the back of this pool. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board?
Yes, a quick question. Uh, just, uh, I'm not sure about the above-ground pool. If, uh, you have a drainage and what's your plan if it does require drainage?
If the pool, so, um, based on the conversations with both the pool company and the contractor, I don't think there's any specific drainage concerns. Um, at this point, certainly if there becomes strange concerns, they would have to be addressed and, um, and handled appropriately. But as of right now, I am not aware of any issues.
Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, the drainage issues will be dealt with by the building department and granting the permit if we were to grant a variance?
Yes, all pools are reviewed for drainage issues.
Thank you.
Just a quick question back to Laura. Uh, I don't think we have had many, uh, above-ground, only few. How, how does, uh, the town deal with the drainage on above-ground? Just, uh, for my information.
Um, so pool permits don't require you to like designate a spot where you would drain them out. Um, but it is occasionally a complaint. And if a building inspector goes out and does see that the water's trespassing and it's bothering the neighbor, they will, um, you know, talk to the applicant and find an appropriate place to do the pool drainage. Unless there's that, so if there's a well-known drainage issue, then the engineering department will go out there. Sometimes you'll have to ask whales around your property. Sometimes you'll have to have a berm to keep everything inside your property. But I, I think most typically, if, if there isn't, you know, specific drainage issues, um, you know, most of the time they'll look and make sure there's not drainage issues, but they, they usually don't have them for above-ground pools.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any comments, questions, and for X the application from members of the public? Hearing none, I would ask if any board member wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that we, uh, that we grant the variance. Um, I'm very familiar with this particular area. I used to live around the, the corner from where this is located. There's a number of, of pools that, uh, are located on the street. Um, while this is a, a corner lot that borders the, uh, borders Balltown Road, as the applicant has indicated, there is, uh, a fair amount of, of natural vegetation and buffering in between the property line and, uh, where the pool would be located. Um, given the fact that there are no rear neighbors and it appears that, uh, uh, the only neighbor that, that, uh, would be affected by the placement of this pool would be the, uh, the neighbor to the right as you face the house. Uh, do not have any, uh, indication that this is going to present a problem. Certainly there's no backyard neighbors. So I don't think it's going to have an adverse effect on the neighborhood or the environment. Uh, would somewhat border on, on, uh, a significant variance, but, um, I think that really given the location of the pool, uh, where the, uh, applicant has attempted to place it, you can't move it any further to the house or really, uh, either direction. I think where it's located, uh, is you certainly wouldn't want to move it any closer to Balltown Road. I think where it's located would be, uh, a suitable position. And really there's no other uh, options at that point. Um, again, uh, it's a self-created issue, but it's not determinative. So for those reasons, I would move that we grant the variance.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Litheif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Trymarky?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reasons stated. Your variance is granted. I wish to thank you for taking the time to come out and join us this evening.
Thank you so much. You just made my kids' night. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Any other business to come before the meeting tonight?
Just one question if I could, Mr. Chairman. I, only because I'm by there so often, I note that the luxury apartments that had come before this board are now being built across from, uh, the Shoprite Plaza. It appears that construction's almost done. Just, uh, for a point of information, I assume that since that was a variance that was denied by this board based on a height issue, that those, uh, the builder has adapted, altered the plans to come within the height restrictions? Laura?
Yes, he did. He had to alter the trusses and he also had to alter the adjacent grade to the building. And one of the big changes that happened in order to meet the 35 feet was, if you guys remember the way you calculate, um, um, the height of the building is an average of all the grades around it. And when the building had first come to you guys, there were two below-ground entrances. Um, because there's underground parking. And so both below-ground entrances were pulling the height of the building up and they removed one. So they shrunk the building and then they removed one of their underground entrances. So there's only one that faces towards the Knots Landing, um, East, um, condos now. And they are complying, complying with zoning.
Perfect. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close, I have an announcement. Uh, we discussed earlier tonight that we'll probably be back in town hall no earlier than June. This announcement was gonna come next month, but I've been asked to do it sooner so that the town board has time to act between the May and June meeting. My wife is retiring in a little over a week and she has persuaded, persuaded me to do the same. And we're under contract to sell the house. And although I will be here in May, I assume that by the time we have the June meeting, I will be residing in Palm Beach, Florida and therefore would not be continuing to serve. It has been my honor and pleasure to serve on this board and to have all of you working with me so that we can assist and give back to our town. Hard to believe that I've been in this house for 30 years now, but the 30 years have come and gone. And it's time to trade in our snow blower for hurricane shutters.
So you're not volunteering to have the June meeting in, in, in your Florida home? Is that what you're telling us?
I would be happy to do that. I'm not sure. I'd have to ask counsel. Would that comply with the open meetings law?
You better ask your wife before you ask counsel.
Yeah. But we do have a big club that's for our HOA, but with COVID, I'm not sure that any of that is open. Cause I have not been down there since before COVID.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I want, I want to really thank everyone for all your help over the years. And as much as we're looking forward to it, it's, it is a little melancholy. My cousin who just retired, it will be strange the first three or four weeks, and then you'll wake up and say it's wonderful. And I think the melancholy may fade away when I cross the bridge from Georgia and I see the sign that says, Welcome to Florida. Of course, I still have another four or five hours of driving to do once I get to Florida.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, I'd like the record to reflect, uh, I appreciate your leadership, uh, your dedication and your service to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I want the record to clearly note that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will miss you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Congratulations and have, enjoy your retirement.
Okay. I appreciate all of the kind words. I will miss everybody. I'll, I'll miss the area. But I, I guess it is time for new adventures.
Since we're already recording, we're still on recording, so I'm just gonna tell you congratulations.
Okay. Thank you.
But Fred, you are still doing the May meeting, right?
I am still doing the May meeting. So, uh, but I, that way the town board can start to plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And we'll see you next month.
Good luck, Fred. Take care.
You too.
You gotta adjourn the meeting.
Oh, the meet, oh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned. We'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.